Test one, test one. Testing one two three, one two three four. Testing one two three, one two three four.
Thank you.
Good evening. A call to order this meeting of the Coweta County Board of Education Agenda 76, excuse me, 766 on Tuesday, May 10th, 2022. If you'll please stand for the pledge at a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Recognitions, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's time I'll call on Mr. Dean Jackson, Public Information Officer, to bring us a couple of recognitions. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. We have two recognitions tonight, one national and one state. And our very first one is of our three high schools because once again, Coweta County School System High Schools have been recognized as being among the country's best high schools by U.S. News and World Report. All three of our high school principals are here with us tonight, and I'd like to ask them to come down and join me if they could down at the mic. Now, while they're coming down, I'll just mention that U.S. News recently released its 2022 Best High Schools List, which recognizes high achieving public magnet and charter schools across the United States. U.S. News Best High Schools ranked 17,843 high schools nationwide and 469 high schools here in Georgia as a part of this list. Once again, East Coweta High School, Noonan High School, and Northgate High School all held a national rank in the top forty percent of schools in the nation and in our state, earning them the status of being among the country's best high schools. This is a distinction, by the way, not just of these three schools, but also for our whole county and our school system, since all three schools, representing students and families across the entire county, have achieved this designation. The criteria for ranking on the Best High Schools Honor includes college readiness indicators, advanced placement participation and performance data, state assessment test proficiency and performance. And that distinction, by the way, means that not just the students in these high schools have performed at a very academically high rate, but they also tend to outperform schools with similar student bodies. Also, college curriculum breadth, underserved student performance, and overall graduate, graduation rate are all included in this distinction each year. It's a particular distinction, by the way, also because school performance data for this year's report was taken from the 2019-20 school year, which was impacted by the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic during the last semester. And that means that these schools and the teachers and students didn't just perform well, they performed well during some very difficult times and very adverse circumstances. So, I'd like to call on Northgate Principal Ashley Wilks, Noonan High School Principal Chase Puckett, then East Coweta Principal Steve Allen to speak. Principal Wilks, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us tonight. This, to be honest, is a list we would look, we look forward to every single year coming out, because it's great to be recognized nationally for all three of our high schools. And as Dean said, it speaks volumes to our system as a whole, because it is truly the end work of pre-K through 12th grade to see everything that they've accomplished. So, thank you again for recognizing us. I can't say enough about how proud I am of our staff and students at Northgate High School and all three high schools, because again, it's such an honor. So, thank you.
And I'll just echo my thanks to you, board, and also to our superintendent. This is a result of decades of hard work in our school system and a commitment to providing every opportunity for every student, providing advanced opportunities for every student. And every several, every few years when we reset our five-year growth plan for the school and the school system, it's based on what the needs are of our community, and we are blessed and fortunate to have a supportive board and a school system that challenges us to get better every day. And it's exciting to celebrate with all three of our high schools performing the way we should for such a phenomenal community. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Dr. Horton.
There's not a whole lot to say other than what they just said, but I would like to say, Dr. Horton, Dr. Guy, board members, and one of the prettiest ladies in the room, Pat Nixon. I always tell her how pretty she is. She's a pretty lady. But here's the thing, we, I have to give this to the teachers and educators of our district. The, the, the challenge that they took on, they draw, they draw the land, the line in the sand and said, "Look, we're gonna take it, we're gonna get it, we're gonna close this door, and we're gonna make things happen." And where they did it virtually, they did it when we came out of it, and you have to give it to the teachers on this one. And it comes down from the support, seeing you guys out in the schools, it makes them feel good. And I appreciate you coming out and doing that each and every day as much as possible. It's not hardly a, every other day I see one of you there at East Coweta High School, and it's refreshing, and it's the support just goes, it just doesn't go unnoticed. And, and I get so many comments about how you do support us as a board. Thank you so much. And once again, I think we just have to applaud our teachers and educators and our staff members for everything they've done over the past three years going through what they did.
One thing I don't get to do publicly very often, I will tell you three, you do a good job. You do a good job. High school principalship is very difficult. It's challenging on its best day, and the three of you do a good job of leading large schools and leading them well. So, thank you for what you do. I agree with what you said. Represents a lot of hard work by your teachers, by your staff, by your kids, by your families, but congratulations to each of you, and I appreciate you. Now, don't tell everybody at the principals' meeting tomorrow I bragged on you.
We just heard from East Coweta High School there. To end all that, now we're gonna turn to East Coweta Middle School for our next honor, because they, and indeed the whole East Coweta community, received some very exciting news last week, that Dr. Jeanette Hallam, Principal of East Coweta Middle, has been selected as the 2022 NAESP National Distinguished Principal for the State of Georgia, selected from and representing all of Georgia's middle school principals. I'm going to ask Dr. Hallam, she's here tonight, if she wouldn't mind coming down and joining me for a moment, but I'll just say a couple of things briefly. National Association of Elementary School Principals established this recognition program in all of our states in 1984 to recognize and celebrate both elementary and middle-level principals separately, who set high standards for instruction, student achievement, character, and school culture for their students, families, staff members in their school. Dr. Hallam was nominated and selected by her fellow principals through a statewide search process conducted by the Georgia Association of Middle, Association of Middle School Principals. And in fact, Dr. Bob Heberlin, who's the executive director of the Georgia Association, came to that school and delivered this award last week and recognized Dr. Hallam. Dr. Hallam herself is a graduate of the University of Dayton, you correct me on any of this, please, if you don't mind, and the University of West Georgia, Anne Liberty University. She started her career in education in Ohio and then began her career here as a special education teacher at East Coweta High in 2004. In 2008, she became a special education in-school coordinator at ECHS, and then at East Coweta High Assistant Principal in 2012, and led Coweta, East Coweta Special Education faculty at that school and their school improvement planning, among other duties. She's received numerous honors and awards during her career, including now as Georgia's 2022 National Distinguished Principal for the State of Georgia. Give you Dr. Jeanette Hallam.
Thank you, everyone. I did want to bring people here tonight that are definitely a part of that award, but they would not fit in this room, nor would they fit in a stadium. Everyone that has contributed to the well-being of our students and our staff across Coweta County, there's just, there's no way to thank everybody all at once. It's an amazing thing to be a part of this district and to be a part of that group. So, this starts with the amazing staff and the leadership of the Coweta County School System, from those at Central Office, to those in our schools, to the board members that do support what we do in our schools every day, but also support the needs of our community and voice those needs to the school system. Our staff at East Coweta Middle School also goes above and beyond in caring for our students, but also caring about their futures. Our parents are the next piece of that puzzle, and it's through strong partnerships with our families that we are able to help our students grow. But this award is also for our students. They've not asked for many of the stresses that have been put upon them the last several years, and they face numerous challenges and distractions, such as social media, family situations that have happened throughout COVID, social situations, but they continue to come to school each and every day, and they continue to grow. And that's what we're all about, is growing our students, helping them succeed with the goals that they have in mind. Lastly, I'm thankful for a husband that does sacrifice and do more at home so that I can be at the many events to celebrate our students and their successes across the school year. And it does all start at home, so our parents play a huge role, as did mine, in instilling a love of learning, but also a love for serving others. And that's huge, that we want to model that for our students every single day. So, with that, thank you for all who have been a part of the journey of our students across the Coweta County School System, because this is for all of you. And thank you to those that will continue to be a part of that. And my apologies that I do have to leave tonight, because we have one such event tonight with our spring chorus concert. So, I'll run over to the Performing Arts Center, try not to get a speeding ticket on the way, and celebrate their successes tonight as well. But thank you for the support of everyone in this room and everyone in our community for the success of our students.
Jeanette, congratulations. Not everybody wins a statewide award and gets to go and represent the state in Washington, and look forward to you doing that in October, I believe it is, that you're going.
Yes, sir.
So, congratulations to you. I will share with you, board members, on what I was able to share with Dr. Hallam and her staff when we went out last week and presented this award tour. My child goes to East Coweta Middle. Middle school's hard. Being a middle school principal's hard. I did one summer of middle school summer school, and it cured me of middle school. But my child goes to East Coweta Middle. She's 14, she's in the eighth grade, and middle school's hard. And I, I choose to keep my child at East Coweta Middle because of the work that the people at East Coweta Middle do every day. She could go some other places that are closer to my office, but I choose to keep her there, and it's because of the leadership you provide. So, as a dad, superintendent, thank you for what you're doing. Congratulations.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 12th, 2022?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Action items, Group One, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first action item I have for you in Group One tonight is to approve an amendment- is to approve an amendment to the Strategic Waiver School System Contracts, Amendment Number Four. Approval is requested to amend Exhibit B of the contract to add the following waiver. It's OCGA 20 dash two dash 220. The reason for this request is, you may recall, back in January, I believe it was, or December, excuse me, it became effective in January, we did raises for classified employees. Uh, the state just approved a 5.4% raise for classified employees, but since we had already gone above and beyond that raise for bus drivers and for school nutrition professionals, uh, we need to be able to amend the salary schedule. So, that's what this waiver is for. Uh, Madam Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the amendment to the Strategic Waiver School System Contract Amendment Number Four. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is this also, uh, going to impact, have a positive impact on our parapros?
This particular statute doesn't cover, uh, that position in particular. However, I will say that our, or, excuse me, the boards raised for classified employees that you approved that was effective in January went above and beyond anything that the state has done.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
Next action item I have for you in group one is to approve, uh, Arbor Springs Playground Equipment Purchased by the PTO. Arbor Springs Elementary School PTO requests approval for the purchase of materials and installation of playground equipment for the school. Equipment will be purchased by the PTO. Total project cost for materials is $30,597.18. The requirements of board policy FEAE have been met. Supporting documents are attached. Madam Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent for the Arbor Springs PTO to purchase playground equipment. Total amount is $30,597.18. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
Next action item I have for you in group one is to approve board norms. Uh, this is a request to approve board norms that were developed at the March 29th, 2022 whole board training session. Board members, if you remember, we began this work on January 6th of 2021 at our whole board training. Uh, with the tornado and some other things, we just didn't get a chance to, to complete it until this past March's, uh, whole board training. Uh, sent it to you for review, uh, on April 19th via email. Uh, what this does, and you may have noticed that boards of education around the state are now developing norms. It allows, first off, it's a best practice for governance teams, for boards of education, um, and it allows us to continue to participate in GSBA recognition programs. Uh, so, Madam Chair, with that, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve board norms that were developed at the March 29th, 2022 whole board training. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The last action item I have for you in group one is to declare Noonan High School bricks as surplus property. Uh, Noonan High School's requesting approval for bricks from the demolition of the main building and fieldhouse building to be declared surplus materials by the Calwita County Board of Education. Upon approval, a num, a limited number of individual bricks from these buildings will be made available to the current graduating seniors of Noonan High and to members of our community under the supervision of the school administration. Uh, if approved, they'll be available for a limited time while supplies last at no cost, uh, to the individuals. Um, board members, I know you're aware, we can't just get rid of things or give them to people, so we need to declare them, uh, as surplus property in order to do that. So, with that, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to declare bricks at Noonan High School as surplus property. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Action items, action items, group two. Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first action item I have for you in group two is to approve school nutrition bids for FY 2022-2023 school year. Approval is requested to approve school nutrition bids for the 2022-2023 school year. The bid tabulation sheet for the nutrition program items has been provided. Uh, US Foods had a bid of $7,608,739.95 for groceries. Thomaston Milk Company with a bid of $753,752.23 for milk. Imperial Dade with a low bid of $77,392.96 for ware washing and chemicals. Imperial Dade with a low bid of $369,455.78 for paper products. Royal Food Service with a low bid of $12,326.25 for produce. And Flowers Baking Company with a low bid of $220,426.46 for fresh bread. Madam Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the school nutrition bids for fiscal year '22-23. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a quick question. I know that we had a, uh, question last week with regard to food supply shortages or lack of delivery, which I think, uh, even our major grocery stores are going through that. Um, but on the grocery bid from US Foods, I'm assuming that that covers meat products as well, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And it, it has gone up over the years, and we are, like a lot of other people, we have experienced supply chain issues and menu changes, um, due to that. It's, it's been an interesting, uh, interesting year for school nutrition in that regard. Yes, ma'am.
Right. Just, and because we, just one quick question that I could not answer to a, for a constituent. We had one, US Foods was the only vendor that showed up to give us a bid. In the event that the food shortage, the manufacturing, that that situation starts to improve, if US Foods cannot meet our demand, do we have flexibility in the contract to go to another supplier who, because we're, I mean, I've, I've talked to our, my grocery store, and they have the flexibility to do that. And that's why you're seeing in your grocery stores locally, a lot of the brands that you were accustomed to seeing, you no longer see them. You're seeing some new products coming online, and it has to do with supply chain issues.
We, we do have language written into, um, the bid specs that if, for any reason, they weren't able to fulfill, um, their obligations under the contract, that we could, uh, potentially go to another vendor. One of the things that, um, I will tell you is concerning to me, there's not a lot of vendors out there that are bidding on school, um, nutrition, uh, programs right now. And it, it's, it's been very, we actually co-op, uh, with Hurd County and, uh, Griffin Spalding to try to get better buying power, uh, and we've had a lot of difficulty, uh, even, even being able to get a tracked bid. So, it's a huge challenge right now.
I have a quick question. So, it's, is it uncommon, uh, that we're just getting one bid for groceries? I mean, during a normal year, will we get more? Because I know we've had in the past, a single bid under food nutrition.
We, we've seen it move in that direction over the last couple of years. When I was, um, school nutrition director a few years ago, um, we, we had multiple bids, but I will say, over the past two to three years, we've seen less and less desire, uh, on the part of, um, food service companies to, to bid on school business. And, and we're seeing that across the country.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
Last action item I have for you in group two is to approve the guaranteed maximum price for bid package number two, construction of the new gymnasium at Noonan High School. Approval is requested for bid package number two, guaranteed maximum price with Paris Construction Group to construct a new gymnasium at Noonan High School. GMP is $22,564,090, including accepted alternates. The GMP summary sheet is attached. Madam Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the guaranteed maximum price for bid package number two for the construction of the new gymnasium at Noonan High School. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Ma'am, I do have one quick question. Uh, Dr. Horton, if I remember you saying correctly, the, uh, the plan is to have this new gym available for use in August of '23, starting next year, next, not this coming school year, but the next school year?
Yes, sir. Plan will be to begin construction, as soon as school gets out, you'll begin to see over the next couple of weeks some equipment and whatnot on site, but the plan will be to have, uh, it occupied when school starts in the 2023 school year. Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Action items, group three, trips. Dr. Horton.
Call on Dr. Mark Guy to bring you one trip for tonight. Dr. Guy.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. The principal of Blake Bass Middle School requests permission for the band students to travel to Orlando, Florida, February 12th through February 15th, uh, 2023. They are, uh, planning on participating in the Disney Musicians Program and visiting the Disney Recording Studios. Uh, this trip is during mid-winter break, therefore, no school days will be missed. There's no cost to the school system, and this request does meet our policy guidelines for out-of-state field trips.
Recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation to approve the field trip to Orlando, Florida for the Blake Bass Middle School band students, February 12th through 15th of 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Superintendent's report. It's Dr. Horton.
It's time I'll call on Mr. Keith Chapman to bring you your budget report, sales tax. We're gonna do a budget workshop, and he'll bring the financial audit from 2021. Mr. Chapman.
Financial report looks a little different tonight than normal. We are actually showing over budget, but that's due to the payment of the supplements that were passed on from the state and approved by the board. Once our budget amendment is made in June, we will not be under budget, and we will not go into reserves. Sales tax, we continue to see very good collections there, a little over 3.1 million. Year-over-year increase is almost 15%. We are required by law each year to have two budget workshops prior to the tentative adoption of our budget. Tonight is our first workshop. Our second workshop will be next Tuesday here at 6:30. Our budget workshop document, this is format we've used for several years. We start by looking at our revenues. We start from FY '22, which is our current year. We were right at 225 million, budgeted for just the general fund, Fund 100. And looking at changes, we look at changes to the state funding first. We have our original allotment for '22. We're looking at, uh, an increase of approximately 4.6 million in our QBE funding. This is due to student growth and teacher experience. Our local fair share has increased 4.4 million dollars. To participate in the state funding, we're required to levy a certain number of mills. We have to deduct what's called local fair share from our earnings. So, this is the, a deduction of 4.4 million dollars this year, in addition to the current amount. At this point, we've received no new transportation numbers from the state. Small increase in nursing. The austerity reduction was eliminated by the state in the '23 budget. That's a 4.8 million dollar increase. We're looking at a projected allotment of 115.6 million dollars. Increase in state funding, 5 million dollars. Uh, based on our current year, we're showing a little over 4 million dollars projected for the current year midterm. That is where the state makes this hole for student growth that we receive in the subsequent fiscal year. Small change in our federal indirect cost reimbursement. Uh, we are allowed to apply a percentage that's calculated by the state toward our federal programs to go back to our general fund. Uh, we've seen no change in bus replacement funds, seen a small decrease in our other state grants. These numbers are adjusted during the year. Would expect those as the year, next year goes forward to increase back to similar numbers. Uh, small increase projected in interest income. Interest rates have eased up a little bit, nothing drastic. Um, other revenues, small change, just based on current year. Right now, we're looking at holding the mileage rate constant with a 3.75% increase in growth. This is less than the increase we saw last year. Projected revenue increase just over 13 million. Projected total revenue, 238.3 million dollars. Our expenditures, projected expenditures, 240.7 million. This has us budgeted 2.4 million in the reserves, which is slightly less than we are in the current year. Salaries and benefits make up 219.4 million dollars of this, over 91%. Our major personnel changes, we have steps for certified employees according to salary schedules. A good portion of this is funded through state monies. We saw a small increase in the TRS, Teachers Retirement System Rate, that we must pay this year. The 2,000 state-based salary increase for teachers. Additional steps added to the teacher salary schedule. We extended it out to recognize longevity of our teachers. Implementation of new technology salary scale, minimal change there. The pass along of the $2,000 sub, uh, additional monies to the administrative staff, most of which are certified employees. We have a few new positions that we've budgeted, and some of our teachers have been paid for with CAREs, with federal money. We are moving those back into general fund and also budgeting some growth positions. Major operating items are fairly similar to the last few years. One significant increase here, required by our insurance company, is cybersecurity. It's about halfway down. That's an increase of $268,000 this year. Uh, without this, we do not qualify for our insurance through our company. Looking at all of our major operating items, that makes up 8.54%, which leaves three tenths of a percent for all other items. Currently, we are projecting our reserves at the end of the fiscal year, the current fiscal year, to be 33.9 million dollars, which would be just over 14% of our budget. We are required by state law to stay under 15%. Uh, we are looking on the horizon, as always, to keep a healthy reserve and also putting Noonan High School back together.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Couple, a couple of comments I'll make. He stole my first one, which the next workshop, uh, is going to be next Tuesday here at 6:30. Uh, most of the increase that you see there in the personnel cost, um, can be attributed to personnel costs that are being passed on from the state. The state funds, um, positions, and the state will pass along raises, and of course, we will get more money for those. So, just by my math, approximately, I think, 11 million right there, uh, is in things that the state has passed on, uh, in the way of salary schedule changes. Um, local fair share did increase. He mentioned that. Um, that is something that it, it's a, it's a negative for the budget. We, we send that money back to the state to be able to participate, uh, in the state funding formula. Um, the cybersecurity increase, he mentioned, um, that is one that, that our insurance company engaged with us, uh, several months ago, and it's one, I think, that's at the forefront of everybody's mind. Um, so, so that's why you see that ad, um, there. And then the last comment I have is some of the CAREs-funded positions are now being moved back into the general fund so we can maximize state funding. We're in an interesting, uh, situation. We've seen some enrollment growth, uh, over the course of the last year. I think we're up just over 400 students from this time last year. Um, if we were to leave those posi, make sure I don't mess this up, Keith. If we were to leave those positions in CAREs, we wouldn't qualify for state funding for those positions. So, we need to move them- So we need to move them out of CARES, and now we can go ahead and qualify earlier for the state funding for those positions. So that's why they're being moved back to the general fund at this time. So I always like to say, at this time of year, I appreciate the work that Mr. Latimer, Mr. Chapman, Financial Services have done in preparing the budget. This is a, this is a first run at it. We'll continue to make some tweaks as we go, but I do appreciate all the work that you have put into it. Last thing I want to mention is in our personnel changes, you did see a line in there about extending salary schedules out for some of our most experienced employees. One of the things that's really important to us, and, and Mr. Copeland gets credit, he brought it to my attention a few weeks ago, possibility of, is there anything we could do? Because the salary schedule did stop at twenty-one years for that veteran teacher. He came to me and was asking, is there anything we could do possibly to be able to incentivize that experienced teacher who does a good job with her kids to stay in the classroom longer from a salary standpoint? We were able to crunch the numbers and look at it, and we've got a change in there for that, and I think it's gonna be money well spent for. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. And that's all I have on the budget.
Just a couple of questions, Mr. Chapman. And this is in reference to workman's comp. A couple of these small business owners here in our county have reached out to me concerning cost increases that they, I mean, dramatic cost increases to their workman's comp. Obviously, those are small business owners, and we are not a small employer. We're the largest employer in the county. Are you seeing any insurance quotes or any raises, rise in insurance costs relating to workman's comp?
Nothing significant for us. The difference would be, we are self-insured for workers' compensation instead of insurance. We do have excess coverage for catastrophic claims. Most small businesses would, would be insured through an insurance company to handle that, which would attribute to the difference.
Thank you.
Welcome. We have Miller Edwards here. He's a partner with Malden and Jenkins. He's responsible for the firm's governmental practice, and he's the partner in charge of the Macon and Savannah offices.
Well, good evening. Appreciate you all having me here this evening. Keith asked me to spend the next hour talking to y'all about the audit. Y'all are good with that, right?
You do? I was gonna mention real quick, you will notice, board members, on your agenda that Hope Pendergrass was scheduled to come and, and give the audit report. She's under the weather, so Miller's a stand-in, and the pressure's on Miller.
There you go. No, everything's good with Hope. She, she is having a little issue right now. It's nothing big. She shouldn't come here today. She contacted me this morning and said, can you help me? I said, sure, no problem. But, uh, no, I'm not gonna take an hour. I am gonna just hit highlights. You know, I, I wanna just open up by saying, number one, this has been a pleasure to be of service to you all. I think we've been your auditor for about four or five years. Keith, is that probably about right? Something like that? And, uh, you know, it's been a joy working with your people. I heard you just mentioned about Mr. Latimer, Mr. Chapman, and of course, all your other staff. They're always on top of the game. I can't say that about everywhere we go. We currently serve about sixty school systems in this state. This is probably one of the better managed ones that I've seen. And again, I thought I'd just open up by telling you that, 'cause that's not something you necessarily hear every day. When you look at this system, it's a good-sized school district. You were talking about the growth in the enrollment this past year that we're now in. You know, you look at it, you're, you're a large entity. A lot of people may not realize that. You know, we know that you're a large employer, but when you look at the financial statements, you've got a large balance sheet, a large income statement, a lot of things happening here. When you look at your balance sheet, you're about six-hundred-and-fifteen million in assets, okay? Now, before we start thinking, let's go spend that money, a lot of that's in your hard assets. That's your facilities and those kind of things. Probably of that six-fifteen, probably about three-hundred-and-seventy million of that is in hard assets. You've also, though, I will say, got about a hundred-and-nine million of cash and investments, which is a great place to be at June thirtieth of twenty-one. Your liabilities, when you look again across the entirety of the school system, is about five-hundred-and-fifteen million. Most of that is very long-term, and most of it is having to do with the state's proportionate share of the pension and the post-employment benefits that you all play a role in.
Miller, if you got a second. Jason, is that document there, is that the audit report, or do we need to go to the website to pull it? Now, on the top there. The, the Adobe document, the PDF up on top, Jason. Is that our audit report? Now, okay. Go to the website, Jason, financial information, and click on the audit report. I'm sorry, Miller, I wanted to have that visual. Financial information, click on it. There you go. And then FY twenty-one audit report, middle section, Jason. There you go, right there. There it is. That's a good exercise. Thank you. Sorry, Miller.
No, that's fine. If you want to, if, go to the page that I was just talking about, you can go to page numbered fourteen. The pages he's scrolling past, number one, one of the things you want to know from me tonight is, is it a clean opinion? Yes. We call this an unmodified report. We believe that what you have in front of you on here, it presents fairly in all material respects, the financial results of operations, your financial position, et cetera, et cetera. You've got a clean report from us. Same thing's true when you look at some of the supplemental reports that are in the back, and having to do with like, what we call the single audit, where you get all these federal funds. You all take in about twenty-two and a half million dollars in twenty-one. You took about twenty-two and a half million of federal monies that passed through the state to come to you. We audited as part of that your special education cluster, as well as your COVID amounts that you took in. So of that twenty-two, twenty-one million that you took in, about ten of that was in just those two grants alone. And we had to make a decision of which ones to, to audit to get the appropriate level of coverage that the feds require, and you've got a clean report from us on that, too. But back to, if you want to scroll down to page eleven, keep going just a little bit, right there. If you look at that, that's what I was talking about when I talk about the balance sheet, and to look at it, everything as a whole. And you, again, you can see the cash and investments that you've got. Those first two rows adds up to about a hundred-and-nine million dollars. Again, you take the assets and these things we call deferred outflows of resources, those two add up to about six-hundred-and-fifteen million. Then you've got the liabilities down below, along with these deferred inflows, they add up to about five-hundred-and-fifteen million. Your bottom line is, you've got an equity position here of about a hundred-and-one million dollars. Now, some people might take that for granted. There's a lot of school systems out there that when they had to throw the state's pension plan and post-employment benefits onto their balance sheet, they went into a deficit, okay? You all are not in a deficit. You've got a hundred-and-one million dollars' worth of equity. Now, you do have a, a deficit from the unrestricted standpoint, okay? But when you look at everything as a whole, and you take the entirety of this, this entire system, you've still got an equity position, even when you added on those liabilities about six or seven years ago, that just kinda came out of nowhere and was made your problem. So again, I, I think you, you've got a good-looking balance sheet. I do think it's, it's large. It's got a lot of things going on. If you want to, let's scroll down to the next page, and we call this the statement of activities. It's another way of talking about an income statement. It's kind of a weird-looking income statement, and most of the time you think of revenues minus expenses, it gives you your bottom line. With Nada Gatsby thirty-four, they want you to have the expenses in the first column, and then work across and then down to come to the bottom line. If you do that, you look at the first column, and it adds up to just short of two-hundred-and-ninety million dollars. That's what it costs to run the school system across all elements, okay? Then you work across, you've got some specific program revenues that are in those three columns, charge of services, operating grants, capital grants, and you come over to the other column, and you'll see midway in the page, on the far right, one-forty-two, three-eighty-five. That's the hole that you're in after you take your cost, and then you subtract directly-related revenues, like grants. You've got a hole of one-forty-two. How do you get out of that hole? You go down the rest of that page, and you see this first row called property taxes, sales taxes. That's how we get out of the hole. And this past year, you, you all had a bottom line of about two-point-two million, okay? So, pretty thin, after all's said and done. You know, you got, I, I want you, when I say that, I want you to understand, sometimes that needs to be a larger number, because from that number, from that two-point-two is where you're gonna have to then come out of your pocket to pay any debt service, or to go include, uh, have capital outlay for new facilities and equipments. So just think about if this was your own home, and you, you're, you're wanting to add on a garage. Well, you gotta have money to do that, correct? That's the same thing here. So I think you had a good year. When you look at the situation across this entirety of this country, for that matter, across the whole world, to get through this year and be able to skim through it with two-point-two, I think's a good place to be. But again, in, in future years, I wouldn't be surprised if that was a little bit larger margin, because you got to have it to continue to invest in yourself. So, I don't know if anybody's got any questions on this at all. The only other things that I'll say is, if you can turn to the, the next page, you'll go down to page sixteen, and go, go up a little bit to the top. There you go. And you'll see we've got two funds here that we pretty much manage. You've got your general fund, and then you've got your capital products fund, which is your SPOLOST fund, okay? When you look at it, I think you've got a good, healthy situation here. The number, the general fund, like every governmental unit, not just school system, but cities, counties, everybody that's got a governmental finance activity, the general fund's the heart and soul of it all. You've got about eleven-and-a-half million and forty-five-and-a-half million of cash and investments, so about fifty-seven million dollars' worth of cash and investments in the general fund at June thirtieth. That's a good place to be, especially if you go down to the bottom of the page and you see, scroll up just a little bit, you'll see fund balance is forty-three-point-one million. Everybody see that number, forty-three-point-one? You have a very liquid fund balance, okay? What do I mean by that is, you don't have a fund balance that says, hey, I'm forty-three, but we've only got a dollar of cash, 'cause everything else is in receivables. No, you've got a liquid fund balance. A lot of your fund balance is true cash. I don't get to say that in a lot of places that I go. Oftentimes, I have to explain that fund balance is not cash. In this case, this particular year, your fund balance is very cash-based, and that's, that's very good. That's very strong. One thing I'll also say, when you look at the, the forty-three million, that gives you about two months' worth of operations to, to cover operations. If you all shut the school system down and it take another dime in, in July and August, you could get through it, okay? Even further, if you look at the cash, that cash of fifty-seven million, you could get through three months, okay? Again, that's a good place to be. Hopefully, that never happens, that we just turn off the revenue siphon. But we do know that we have a certain seasonality to what we have here anyway, because property taxes come in during the fall. So we do have to be able to get through three months, maybe even four, on our own, before those property taxes start to come trickling in, in, in the fall. So just keep that in mind. Whenever they're talking to you about the budget, when they're talking to you about the finances, you gotta pay attention to what our funds are at each step of the year. Your picture is made at June thirtieth. This is just a picture. It's good for one day. This balance sheet is good for one day. But again, I think it's a good-looking balance sheet. I think your general fund's doing well. Your, your SPOLOST fund is also doing well. Notice the fund balance of forty-seven million. SPOLOST fund is doing exactly what it's supposed to be doing. It's collecting the funds, and it's using those in the right way. And we have issued a report on that as well, by the way, that you have a clean report when it comes to your SPOLOST activity. So again, I think everything's looking really good here. Um, you know, I can't think of anything else. I could just keep going and going and going, but I don't think that's what y'all want me to do. But I do think you've got a good situation here, one that you should be very pleased with. You know, when I look at the numbers objectively, as a third party, as I am, I think you, you've got a good situation here that you should be quite proud of, and let's hope that it continues, that you all continue to be able to invest in yourself and continue to improve the school district the way you already have.
Thank you, Miller. Appreciate that presentation. We'll say again, proud of the work of our financial services team. Mr. Chapman, Mr. Latimer, you guys do a great job there. But to have a clean audit with as many moving parts as we have going on, just wanna take a minute to remind everybody. Takes our leaders in our building, takes our teachers following purchasing procedures. Those bookkeepers are literally gatekeepers in our buildings. They are the, the main cog in that, in that dual-control situation that we have to have to make sure that there are no exceptions in our audit. So that commitment from every employee, that commitment to fiscal responsibility from this board, and everybody having a clear understanding what our procedures are, that leads to a clean audit. And one of the things that we are most proud of every year, Mr. Latimer, Mr. Chapman, and, and of course, myself, we want a clean audit. We want to do it right, and we're committed to doing it right. So just applaud all of our employees for that, and thank the board for your leadership in that. Thank you, Miller.
Thank you.
Student attendance. We'll go, Dr. Mark Guy, staff and student attendance.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. Before I go with those upcoming reports, I'd like to at least acknowledge the school bus appreciation artwork as you're walking in, into the building tonight. From Blake Bass Middle School, art teacher Lisa Hollins provided that school bus appreciation artwork, so we thank them. For the eighth attendance reporting period, highest staff attendance goes to Thomas Crossroads Elementary School. The highest student attendance in the program area was Central Educational Center. Highest elementary student attendance, Northside Elementary. Highest middle school student attendance, Blake Bass Middle School. And the highest high school attendance for students, Home of the Vikings, Northgate High School. For the board goal report, I would like to call your attention to the leadership capacity component of our strategic plan. In an effort to provide and support skill development and leadership growth, we will be conducting our annual administrative workshop on Monday and Tuesday, June sixth and June seventh, two thousand twenty-two, at the Donald W. Nixon Center for Performing and Visual Arts. This year's Leadership Practicum for Principals and Assistant Principals and Central Office Leadership Staff will focus on an overview of the system's strategic plan, the Coweta Schools Effectiveness Review, data analysis, discipline, PBIS, legal guidance, student transportation and safety updates, as well as some other leadership and team-building activities. While this event does take place during the summer, our various school leaders are looking forward to an extensive upcoming professional learning experience.
Thank you, Dr. Guy. On your facilities and construction report tonight, it's a little bit shorter than it has been. We've been able to close out some, some projects. You'll see the Northgate High School renovation and modification. We are getting very close to the finish line. They're, they're finishing work in the band and drama, Family Consumer Science area. They'll get that finished this summer, and we should have final completion in July on that project. The addition at Northgate, it is, it is, for all intents and purposes, done. We'll complete that here next month. Re-roofing at Ruth Hill and White Oak, just waiting on closeout documents and final pay requests there. Same thing for the CEC-Gym HVAC project, just waiting on closeout documents. And then Noonan High School replacement facility, you approved the gymnasium tonight. Hopefully, by the August board meeting, we'll be able to bring you bid package three, which will be the academic building, the, the core of the academic building over at Noonan High. So they'll be working on that all summer and hope to bring that to you by August. Smokey Road fire alarm, we have a fire alarm that is no longer supported, and parts aren't available, so we're gonna have to take care of that here very, very, very soon. So bids are supposed to be, excuse me, proposals are supposed to be received on May the twenty-sixth, and we'll get that project rolling as soon as possible. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. At this time, we set aside forty-five minutes for public comment, and I'd just like to read the agreement that anyone who signs, who signs up to speak agrees to adhere to. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Board of Education will listen to each presentation without comment. After the presentation is made, each board member may respond if he or she wishes to for a period of no longer than one minute each. Only residents of Coweta County or employees of the Coweta County School System may speak in the public comment portion. No grievances will be heard concerning any specific personnel action or any specific county employee, except through the grievance procedure set forth in our personnel policy. No one will be allowed to discuss any matter involving threatened or pending litigation with the Board of Education during public comment portion. In the need to preserve order at the meeting, no person attending the meeting will be allowed to boo, hiss, cheer, clap, or otherwise show approval or disapproval for any speaker in any manner whatsoever. No signs or placards advocating any action or position will be allowed. No personal attacks on any person will be allowed. No citizen or system employee will be retaliated against in any manner whatsoever for speaking on matters of public concern. Any person not recognized within allotted time period will be rescheduled to speak at the next meeting. And we do- And we do have several who, several people who we will not be able to hear tonight, but we will get them rescheduled for presumably next month. And I'll just call you down. You'll have five minutes. We have the time on the screen. First, we have Tori Allen.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Tori Allen, and I have lived in Board of Education District Seat Four, and my children have attended Coweta County Schools for fourteen years. I've spent a good bit of time in those schools, serving as co-president of several of the PTOs, and it has opened my eyes to not only the challenges facing teachers and administrators in our schools, but also to the professionalism and excellence exhibited by our teachers and administrators on an everyday basis. These teachers give everything they have to make sure their students achieve to their full potential, and that is the why behind the time that I do devote to my kids' schools. Four years ago, during the last Board of Education election, I voted for the incumbent for the District Four seat. Typically, I research my candidates, their voting record, their core beliefs, and their commitment to their post. However, four years ago, I did not deem my due diligence when it came to the Board of Education District Four seat. I thought, I love my kids' schools. They are the best schools and a really great school system, and I loved my kids' teachers. They're great teachers. So, without doing my research, I simply checked the box for the incumbent in District Four. Shortly thereafter, several friends commented that they were surprised that the incumbent was re-elected, considering that there was never any visits to schools and no graduations attended. So, I started paying attention. I started reading, and I started listening. And what I discovered is that I made a mistake by not doing my due diligence and just checking a box simply because I was happy with my kids' schools. Well, it's time for another Board of Education election on May twenty-fourth, and Coweta voters are voting for four Board of Education seats. Some candidates have chosen to run as a slate, making a lot of claims regarding liberal ideology being taught in Coweta County Schools. There have been a lot of labels thrown around in this election, labels like "true conservative", "RINO," which means Republican in name only, "Ministry of Truth," and "woke teachers," along with such terms as "critical race theory," "indoctrination," and "militant righteousness." There is also a political action committee, or a PAC, called the Seventeen Seventy-Six Project, pouring money into Coweta County, paying people from out of state to canvass Coweta neighborhoods, sending out the same template flyer in Coweta County that is sending throughout the United States, all in an attempt to take over Board of Education's nationwide. With all of the shouting going on, it's been hard to separate fact from fiction. I encourage each voter to do their due diligence. Don't just check a box. First, do your own research. Figure out what issues are important to you and research it specific to Coweta County. Read the Parent Bill of Rights and other legislation banning divisive concepts from being taught in Georgia schools. Google the Coweta County Board of Education Election Two Thousand Twenty-Two. Google each of the candidates' names. You will be surprised at how much you find. Don't simply read the first few sites listed. Those are more than likely boosted by certain factions so that you see and read them first. Continue reading the fourth, fifth, and sixth article. Go to the candidates' Facebook pages. Read not only their posts dating all the way back to March, but also the comments from people under those posts. Finally, go to the Coweta County School Systems website. The school system has provided a fact versus fiction page to assist voters. You can also look up voting records and attendance records for each sitting Board of Education representative. Do your own research. Don't check a box. Second, ask questions. Ask a teacher or a Coweta County School Administrator, when was the last time they had contact with their BOE representative? Coweta County School System employees are not supposed to openly support BOE candidates. However, they can answer fact-based questions. Ask teachers if they have ever seen or been asked to teach critical race theory in our schools. Ask questions. Don't just assume that what you're being told or claims by a candidate are the reality. Do your own research. Do your due diligence. Make your own decisions based on facts rather than claims made by candidates trying to get your vote. Don't just check a box like I did four years ago. Thank you so much.
Excuse me. Next, we have Annie Brackett.
Good evening, school board members and superintendent. My name is Annie Brackett, and I came to my first-ever board meeting back in February, and I discussed parent involvement in our schools. Just a quick background, I grew up in this county, Coweta County, and I now proudly work in this community as a healthcare provider. My three sisters and I all attended Noonan High School. I graduated there in two thousand, and now my husband and I have four children in District Four, and we're involved in every level of schooling, from puddle jumpers with Miss Janey all the way up to about-to-be-in-high-school. We have had children in Coweta County Schools for over eight years. So, with that being said, I find it imperative to continually strive to help make this school system a wonderful place for our children. I've got skin in the game, so to speak. This is an important month for Coweta County. We have quite a large local election coming up two weeks from today. And while looking over some of the literature that I've received from candidates that are hoping to be elected to fill these seats, I can't help but be troubled. I find it very alarming what some of these candidates are claiming about our school system. One piece of literature that a gentleman from Indiana gave me at my door claims that these candidates will fight for greater transparency. One other candidate remarked on social media, and I quote, "I am disheartened by what we see going on in schools all across America, denying parents' access to their children's educations. I support full transparency," end quote. I wholeheartedly agree. I support full transparency. Except, this candidate does not have children in the public school system here. How would they know that there isn't parent transparency? Let me just give you a snapshot of what I get, what I've gotten in the past two weeks from my children's schools. I receive weekly emails from every grade level that my children are in with their curriculum for the following week. I receive weekly emails from my children's middle school principal, informing us of events, upcoming dates, school-wide testing, et cetera. I am on About Three Thousand Reminds, which is the county's text communication, and I have daily, if not hourly, texts coming through from my children's teachers, from their administrators. These texts will range from homework, from class assignments, from reminders, from upcoming tests, et cetera. Throughout the past eight years, though, I have requested to meet with some of my children's teachers face-to-face if there's a concern that I have, and I have always, always been met with the answer yes, and we have been able to meet. I'm able to go online and see my children's grades. I'm able to go online and see their assignments. My third grader usually brings his assignments home. My older children, they are sometimes on the computer, but I can log in and see those assignments, and if you can't, you can request them from their teacher. All that to say, also, in the past two weeks, we've gotten emails asking for a parent, you can opt in or out for scoliosis check, for a permission slip to go on a field trip, for my child to watch the PG-rated movie, The Lorax, for my two middle school children to opt in or out for the sex ed education unit that their schools are being taught. I have the right to opt in or out for my children in all of those circumstances. So, for a candidate to claim that this school system isn't transparent, from my perspective, that is unequivocally false. As I stated, when I attended this meeting in February, there's a great deal of parental involvement in this county, and there's a great deal of transparency. And as a parent, you may not have time to read every email or see every remind, but you cannot deny that there is transparency. I do find it unsettling, the claims that this collective group of candidates is making on social media and on literature, that out-of-state individuals are being paid to distribute within this county. I find it odd that none of them have a child in this school system. If you're a concerned voter and you don't have children in the school system, reach out to someone that does, or reach out to a teacher that you know in this school system, and ask them. These teachers are amazing. We just celebrated teacher appreciation last week, but I can tell you, there is never enough appreciation for our teachers. To the teachers here tonight, to the teachers at home watching this, thank you. Thank you for my children's personal teachers this year, because I know firsthand how much you have poured in to my children, and you've made their lives richer. This school system strives for excellence in education, and I hope you will vote for someone who shares that belief.
Next, we have Robert DeBeauz.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak this evening to the board and to the community. I've been attending these meetings for the past year now. I've seen several things celebrated in our school system, such as state championships for softball at East Coweta and cheerleading at Northgate. We've seen talented students who've been with the All-State Chorus and Band in both middle school and high school celebrated. Last month, the students at Noonan Crossing Elementary were recognized by the Georgia Council for Economics for their project that they completed celebrated. There's a lot to celebrate in our schools. Also, during the past year, I've witnessed this board be chastised by citizens in our community for things such as masking too much or not masking enough, for moving too quickly on something or not quickly enough on other things. But as a member of this community, I'd like to take a few minutes to thank the board. Thank you for lowering our millage rates for the past two years. I took the time to research counties similar in population to Coweta, counties such as Columbia, Bibb, Douglas, Clark, and Carroll, and it was not a surprise to me when I found out that Coweta has the lowest millage rate of them all. I'd like to thank the board for approving the addition of Blake Bass Middle School to District Four, a school which is very important to our community in District Four. It has reduced the overcrowding of our middle schools and reduced the usage of trailers in classrooms. And personally, for me, it has saved me nearly two hours of commuting time each day back and forth to Madras. I'd also like to thank the board for approving the turf fields at our high schools. These fields have given a consistent and level playing field to our student athletes since their installation. No longer do the soccer and lacrosse teams have to worry about if their matches will be played or if there will be injuries during their matches. I'd like to thank the board for approving the state-mandated suicide prevention programs. If these programs can save one life, it's worth the time, the effort, and the cost. I'd like to thank the board for supporting increased school tax exemptions for our senior citizens. And let it be noted, all these improvements and additions were approved by a six-to-one vote, and each instance, the lone no vote was a representative from District Four. I would like to thank the board for consistently being present in our schools. I've seen board members at events ranging from safe graduation in elementary schools to athletic competitions, concerts, and plays. I've witnessed board members opening car doors on the morning, opening morning of school, to sitting in torrential downpours to honor graduates at Northgate. However, the one person who I have not seen in our schools is the representative from District Four, not present at these special events and not present throughout the school year in the classroom, and it's time for that to change. To those of you that currently serve on the board and those that may serve in the future, I encourage you to continue the conservative fiscal policies while allocating resources so that our teachers have the tools needed to help our students succeed while maintaining a safe and secure learning environment. I encourage you to do your due diligence to monitor the curriculum to ensure it's age-appropriate, conforms to the state laws of Georgia, and continue to include parents in the decisions which impact their children. Challenge each other. Challenge a status quo, but do it in a respectful and professional manner. We must continuously work to improve our schools. And to the community, I say this, three hundred and thirty-six. You see, in three hundred and thirty-six hours, the polls will be closed on May twenty-fourth's general primary election. At that time, the voters of Coweta will have spoken and decided the future direction of our schools. The voters will decide to either continue to support public education, pushing our teachers and administrators to continue to strive for excellence, for this is what will make our community successful. In a successful community, we will see increased job opportunities and increased home values. Or voters will decide that they no longer want to support these public schools. You see, there's a group in Coweta whose goal ultimately is to defend public, or defund public education. They are being supported by groups outside of our state who do not have our best interest in mind. They are attempting to sway your vote by making statements such as graphic sexual comic books. Again, comic books are available in our school libraries. Schools distribute anti-second amendment material. Our schools give elementary school students books about what it means to be transgendered, and that our schools provide reading material on why the Pledge of Allegiance should be banned. It's time for us as a community in Coweta to take a stand. Take a stand to support our students, teachers, and our schools. I'll leave you with this. Do your due diligence, research the candidates and who's behind them. Thank you.
Next, we have Rachel Renzinck. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing that. Rachel. All right. Next, we have Spencer Lewis.
How are y'all doing? It's wonderful to be amongst honorable board members, Superintendent Horton and Linda Meek. It's been quite some time now since we first met back in February of two thousand twenty-one in the aftermath of a sitting board member allegedly standing at the Washington Monument as our democratic process was challenged and attacked. This board member pushed for overturning the two thousand twenty election based on the big lie that the election was stolen, and now has the audacity to ask once again for y'all's votes. I'm still trying to wrap my head around the moral gymnastics someone must be capable of to try to overturn a legitimate election, then also try to run for public office. Linda, how can you ask for votes when just last year you were trying to overturn the election? I did not come here tonight to rehash that issue, though.
Mr. Lewis, if you'll speak to the board about these comments.
Okay. Board, I did not come here to rehash that issue, though. As she seems to love a good scandal, I have plenty of other things to talk about tonight. If you got to know Linda, you come to realize that basis claims are her MO. Once it was about turf, now it's about CRT, SEL, or whatever.
All right, Mr. Lewis, let's move along the comments.
Am I not saying vagina enough?
Okay. I think we're done. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
All right. We're going to move on to Josh Weida, please.
Time is not on my side, so I'm going to be quick. These are the questions that I submitted to No Left Turns Town Hall a couple of weeks ago. They were meant to be read at the event. They were not used. They were meant to be passed on to the candidates. I've gotten no replies. No Left Turn advocates for education, not indoctrination, but some of the candidates have said that there is no such thing as a neutral education. Is a neutral education possible, and will you work to ensure that the Coweta County School System provides one? Four of the school board candidates have been endorsed by the GRA, which passed a resolution in December calling public schools dangerous indoctrination centers and calling upon Republican households to withdraw their children from them. Are you willing to comment on that resolution, and if so, please do? Reports are surfacing that some candidates are deleting comments and blocking users from their campaign pages on social media. Can candidates who silence voters be expected to serve fairly once elected? At a recent Invited Candidates Only Forum hosted by the Coweta GOP, it was stated that the four candidates and attendants are running as a team to effect a, quote, "conservative takeover" of the Coweta County School Board. Would such a takeover prejudice the board against non-conservatives by any definition? Four of the candidates are running as true conservatives, implying a distinction between them and conservatives of... them and conservatives of any other kind. What makes a true conservative different, and what will true conservatives do differently if elected to the board? Mr. Britton, in comments made in his campaign page, stated the NGOs have the goal of turning children in public schools into socialist zombies. Elsewhere, he accused the state and federal government of fascism, dire allegations that command attention. Would Mr. Britton or any of the other candidates care to discuss those allegations further? There is no place in public education for extreme ideologies like BLM, Antifa, Marxism, or the woke agenda. In light of emerging questions about your own affiliations, is there a place for QAnon, the John Birch Society, which, as an aside, called Eisenhower a communist? Or Tea Party activists who have well-documented records outside of the state? Have any of you ever been associated with any of those movements? Ms. Menck attended a screening of a documentary called The Mind Polluters, February this year, which makes grave allegations against the public education system. The documentary is concluded by Speaker Ken Ham, the founder of Answers in Genesis. I apologize for disruption.
You can continue, Mr. Weida.
Thank you. Ken Ham, the founder of Answers in Genesis, telling children to get their children out of public school now before it is too late. In remarks afterward, Ms. Menck addressed the audience, saying, "What you saw in that film is true." Does Ms. Menck believe that public education intentionally targets Christian conservative families and grooms their children for sexual abuse, spiritual kidnapping, and mind control, as the documentary describes? And if so, how will such a belief shape her next four years on the board? In remarks made to the audience after the February screening of The Mind Polluters, Ms. Menck claimed to be in possession of flash drives.
Excuse me. You're out of order. Okay. I enforce them at my discretion.
Your discretion isn't good.
Okay, you are out of order. You're, okay.
It's in deference to Mr. Britton if he or any of the other candidates would like to answer these questions which have been provided to them. I will yield now.
Okay, this is not a public forum. This is a time for you to make comments. There's not, it's not conversation, it's not back and forth. This is for you to make comments to us as a board, and if we choose, we may respond. But if you'll just complete your comments for us, please.
I appreciate you, ma'am. Thank you. Ms. Menck claims to be in possession of flash drives containing school system information that she was willing to make available to concerned parents without the need for Freedom of Information request. I'm a concerned parent, and I want to know if those flash drives are available to me, if you still have them. In remarks made at a Fayette County GOP breakfast in April of 2021, Ms. Menck calls public education "the biggest money laundering scheme you've ever seen." Would she care to elaborate? Ms. Menck has an extensive social media footprint, much of it in private Facebook groups with content not available to the general public. In the interest of transparency and disclosure, would Ms. Menck like to consider and discuss the group she belongs to, the company she keeps, and the contents for online activity?
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Next, we have Russell Campbell.
All right, good evening. Things get a little passionate at times, obviously. I'd first like to congratulate the board and the school system. We've seen a lot of great things tonight. We've seen educators who have been recognized for excellence by outside organizations, and I give them a lot of credit for that, and of course, I give the school board credit, too, for, you know, nurturing a great environment. And so I want to thank all them, and I want to even thank the auditor for not talking for an hour. But I wanted to give a quick book review of a book that I read. I picked it somewhat randomly off a list of books that some organizations would like to ban, and it's called The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. And there's a reason that it's banned, or they want to ban it, but it's a good book, I think, because it gives people, students, a look into a community that they don't always see, Native Americans, and specifically, Native Americans on a reservation. And you learn about friendships, and you learn about parental and family relationships in these environments, and you learn about how much it hurts to be put down and looked at derogatively and, you know, having people speak that way about you. And you learn about how it can be really great when people accept you. And these are good things for students to hear and read about. But it's a diary of a 15-year-old boy, and I remember what I talked about when I was a 15-year-old boy, and my friends talked about when we were 15-year-old boys, and he talks about that. And that's the reason that it's banned, because he talks about himself fairly intimately. That's the reason they want it to be banned. But it's nothing new. It's been going on forever, and it'll keep going on. And banning it won't hurt a bit, or won't help a bit, especially when you've got the internet, you know, in this day and age, something I certainly didn't have. But we didn't even go to the, to the library for these things. I had friends that had magazines, you know, let's face it. So this is not going to help. It's, it's counterproductive, and I hope that you all realize that. I also want to talk about lies. There are a lot of lies being thrown about, about the school system, about what's taught, about the board members, and even I found out today about a principal who's being attacked with lies. And I want to emphasize to this community and anyone that happens to be listening out there now or in the future, when you look at this video, that lies are not going to help us get anywhere. And you have to use your brain, and you have to determine what's likely to be true and what's likely to be a lie. And I think we can all determine that, but some people let their political desires, their religious desires override that. And I will say once again, something I've said before here, and that is, to people that are Christian, at least, you know, it applies somewhat to other religions, of course, too, but Jesus said, "I am the truth." And if you go around spreading lies, supporting lies, I don't see how you can call yourself a Christian. You've missed the message. We have to be truthful with each other. We have to be honest. We have to be compassionate. We have to be empathetic with each other. And we can't go around believing every conspiracy theory that we run into, because it's going to be a bad place we find ourselves in. We already find ourselves in that bad place to some extent, because there are school boards out there that have had very serious threats against them, and we don't need that here, don't need it anywhere. So I encourage the people that are thinking that they can get ahead by telling lies to stop lying. Be honest, be truthful. Do that truthfully, and maybe we can respect you. Maybe one day, if you operate that way, and you have the school system at, at heart, and the kids at heart, you could actually be a real school board member. Right now, no, not at all.
Next, we have Deborah Carroll.
Sorry, I'm shaking. I'm cold. I just want to dovetail on a little bit of what Russell was just saying about, you know, the books, and, and how banning them is really just ridiculous at best. But I would at least like the board to, I'm requesting that the board consider a moratorium on the dirty book reading until Kemp's new legislation can be examined by the administration. Once those books that are removed, based on that legislation, if there are still some that are objected to, then you can bring it to the board at that time. But at this time, it just seems to be a redundant one-penny show. I also want to give a big congratulations for all the accolades that our schools, our students, our teachers are receiving. Our educators must be doing something right. They need to be shown the respect that they deserve. And thanks to the Noonan Times Herald and 11 Live News for making public the PAC that is financing the campaign of those listed on these mailers with these lies about our educational system, about our, our teachers, about our curriculum. I want to thank them for bringing that to the public's knowledge, because otherwise, unless you attend these meetings, you may not know about this. And maybe I'm the go-to girl, but I have been in contact with many teachers, librarians, and administrators that have voiced how insulted they are by these lies, and they are rightly so. Our teachers have worked to achieve bachelor degrees, master degrees. They take continuing education classes. They expose themselves to COVID. One of our teachers died exposing herself to COVID in the public schools so that our students could be, could be educated. So to insult these teachers is just, it, it's beyond words of horrible. And now they've gone after one of our beloved principals, Chief Steve Allen, and you've gone after the wrong one now. You want to talk about a beloved educator in this county? It's him. Maxwell Britton, you couldn't stand in his shadow.
Ms. Carroll, this, this is not, this is, okay, we are, we are to hear your comments to the board, so let's keep it to that, please.
All right, I'll keep it there. But the, the 1777, 1776 Project, which is the PAC, if you start researching them, you're going to find out that their big objection to education, if you look on their website, is the 1619 Project. That is what they call CRT. 1619 is the year that the first enslaved Africans arrived in Virginia. That's their idea of CRT. It's my idea of blatant racism. Now, we all know that Brent Frost paid at canvassers $2,600 a month plus expenses to go out and canvass for these, these candidates. But you know who contacted the canvassers that applied? A guy by the name of Jason Greiss. Let me spell that for you, because I want you to Google him. It is G-R-E-I-S-S. He represents the Young Americans for Liberty. You will learn that Mr. Greiss and this foundation have 12 sexual harassment suits, including one from a woman that alleges that Mr. Greiss, in a bar, took her hand and tried to force it on his penis. So understand who is, who is funding this slander on our schools. Do you remember the Moral Majority back in the 80s? They were concerned our children were going to be gay from watching Teletubbies. And what did we learn? They weren't moral, and they weren't the majority. And now we're learning the same thing here. This, this is just this generation's moral majority. So my time is up. I want to thank you again. I hope that we will keep Coweta, Coweta, because we are Coweta Strong.
Next, we have Jasmine Meehan.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. There is a huge divide among the people. This is not new. It's been building more and more over these last few months and continues to grow. Kindness and general decency is becoming rarer. Sometimes, we must remind ourselves that we do not know what is going on in everyone else's lives. We should always strive to be good people and great neighbors. I implore more of us to be kind to each other. As adults, it is our job to set an example for our children. Just alone, social media is toxic. Parents bullying each other online, and we wonder why this happens in our schools. Where have our values and morals gone? When did they escape our community? We must do better. I recently noticed our own county ID department has enough time on their hands to create a new extension to the Coweta County website, where you all have decided what is fact versus fiction, furthering the divide. And yet, my son and other children still have the ability to access adult content on school-issued Chromebooks. My family has recently dealt with this specifically and was informed by the IT department that when an inappropriate site is reached and acknowledged, then it will be blocked. This needs attention before the next school year. These blockers should be in place prior to. On this new fact versus fiction page, I would first like to note that the book that was referred to as Waiting for Alaska, Alaska, is actually Looking for Alaska by John Green. This book contains material involving a 16-year-old boy getting his first oral experience, tons of under-edged drinking, so much that there is a tragic accident. There's a reference in the book to porn. The main character and his crush, Alaska, watched some together, and then they talk about it. So many people say the kids now are already having sex. I'm out of touch. There's nothing wrong with these books. They claim that we are trying to hold our kids back from experiencing the real world, sheltering them, if you will. Well, if this is the real world, as what's depicted in some of these books, then I'm affirmed that I'm doing the right thing. Like, for example, in Tricks by Ellen Hopkins, which covers many different characters, but this one boy has found himself prostituting for money to help support his family. He ends up finding his first experience with a male, as a prostitute, exquisite, after getting through the initial pain. It's described in detail in this book, among many other situations that are pretty extreme. In what real world does this book belong in a public school building? This is most certainly a book that would land me in jail for giving it to a minor, but since there's this strange loophole in the system, our schools are an exception. Tricks is currently located only at Noonan High. However, Looking for Alaska is still available at Noonan High, along with Northgate, East Coweta High, Evans Middle, Smoky Road Middle, and Winston Doughtel. This literature was brought to the attention of the board at the end of last year. The wording in your factor fic, factor fiction section on the website is very interesting. The first question regarding the book says, "Are Coweta County teachers and media specialists allowing students to read pornography for class assignments, or allowing children to check pornography out of school media centers?" I would agree that this answer is no. It's hard to believe a school teacher is assigning this type of work. However, if we reword the question, "Are there books and materials available in the media centers that may be deemed inappropriate for children? Are there books containing adult materials such as sex, rape, prostitution, drugs, and alcohol abuse?" That answer is yes. There are multiple pieces of literature, literature available for checkout in the media centers. The bulk of them are in the high schools, but our middle schools are still with them. And I, for one, having a child that is a few years from middle school, find this very concerning, that this is something that my children will be able to access. It's very concerning as well that we are twisting a narrative about what's happening in the school. You all know about the six books submitted for review. Dr. Horton, we discussed that these books months ago, and that you all had agreed to work with us in regards to reviewing them. So I'm confused now why there's a fact check that these books are not in our school. So parents and guardians, please dive in yourselves. Do your own homework. Everyone should decide what's appropriate for their children at home, but at schools, it shouldn't be a question. And this extends to social media, television, all these crazy apps. My kids don't have access to those things. I don't have to worry about it. But I do have to worry now when we go to school. And people want examples of indoctrination, and I say, take a look at society. There are more children now than ever who are not sure about their gender, their sexuality. Suicide rates are skyrocketing, and there's studies that have been, been done that this is all relative. So it's a shame how taboo that is to talk about all this, but all in all, I think we agree our children's lives matter tremendously, and finding a solution should be the priority. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
And Ms. Meehan, if I may, just to clarify, those six books have been pulled pending review. They're going, they're undergoing review by review committees at this time. In most instances, there are only one or two copies of those books, so they are not available at this time to Coweta County School System students, because our media committees are reviewing them. are reviewing them.
Mr. Superintendent, I think the issue is how did they get there in the first place?
I don't know how they got there in the first place, but what I will tell you is they're not there now because they're being reviewed.
Are there any board comments at this time?
I would like to take a moment to just say congratulations to the Class of 2022. I know that there is a lot of political unrest going on in the county, but what we first focus on, when I hear all of the negative, the comments, the false accusations coming at the school system, what I don't hear is about our students. What I don't hear is anybody talking about who's in that classroom, who's motivating those kids. And as a mother of a 2022 East Keweta High School graduate, I just want to focus some attention on those kids. We have celebrated at honors nights. We have watched kids come from diverse backgrounds that are going to full rides to Mercer. They are going to the Military Academy. They're going to the Naval Academy, and we are getting things right. And we need to focus on our students and what's best for our kids because as a mother of four kids that went through this school system, if we're not talking about our students, we have missed the boat. And the buck does stop right here. It stops with these people sitting at the table, and it has to keep students as our focus. And that's going to be my goal, that is our goal. It always has been my goal in my years of service is to focus on our students. But I want to say an extra congratulations to our Class of 2022. We are graduating in about nine, nine, 10 days. We've got kindergarten graduations. If you've never attended one, that'll make you feel good about your life. Go to a kindergarten graduation. We've got kids moving on from eighth grade. We are moving despite the political unrest. So I want to say thank you to our teachers, our students, our families. I appreciate you. And I also want to add a very happy birthday to Ms. Pat Nixon.
Madam Chair, I do have a comment following upon what Ms. Dees said. She said, "Congratulations to the 2022 graduates." It's hard to get out. I want to take a moment to recognize all of our student athletes. I believe, and if I'm incorrect here, I apologize, that as of Noonan Baseball getting knocked out of the state playoffs last night, all of the Keweta County high school teams are now done for the year, but what a year that they had, going all the way back to the fall sports through winter. There's been some state championships. There's been some deep runs in playoffs, but more than that, every time I've seen, they exhibited class. They were not just taught how to play the game, how to do their routine, how to play the sport that they're representing. They're taught how to represent their school and their families in Keweta County. And I've seen them lose with grace. I've seen them win with grace. I've seen a lot of practice hours and, as athletes, band members, cheerleaders, any of the extracurricular activities, I'm including you in that, there's a lot of hours of practice. It would be astounding, I think, if we added up all the hours that have been spent on practice fields and in parking lots with music instruments or choral rooms. Just the other night, I was at the, I think, the last of the three musicals at the Nixon Center that East Keweta put on. If you've never seen one of those, next year, over the summer, take one of those in. It's amazing at the talent. So congratulations to all of those student athletes, extracurricular, band, chorus, you name it. Great job, and enjoy watching you. Appreciate what you do.
Are there any other board comments?
Madam Chair, I have a comment. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. Every week should be Teacher Appreciation Week, every week. And if you don't thank your teacher every week, think again because they've got a really, really important job. It's a tough job sometimes, but it's probably one of the most rewarding jobs out there. So I appreciate all the teachers. I appreciate all the principals. We saw three, four principals here tonight received accolades. And I'm looking around the room, and I see a lot of principals, former principals, out in the audience. I see teachers in the audience tonight. If you go to these sporting events, these performing arts concerts, and just interact with the teachers, then you'll find out what special people they really are, more than just in the classroom, outside the classroom, in the public. So don't just make one week a year Teacher Appreciation. Make the entire school year Educator Appreciation, and thank them every day for what they do because they're educating our future. They're educating our community. Things are going to make this community continue to grow, and you're here for a reason. You're here because you chose to either stay here or move here, okay? And something brought you here. I don't know what it was. I don't know if it was schools, restaurants, job. I don't know what it was. But something brought you here, but more importantly, something is keeping you here. And a lot of times, that's the school system. So teachers, administrators, principals, fellow board members, thank you for what you do, okay? And citizens, thank you for what you do because we couldn't do it if it were not for you, okay? So thank you, everyone in this room, for what you do.
Are there any other board comments?
I've just got a short comment. Larry covered the teachers, and Buzz covered athletes and coaches and things, and they definitely deserve all the praise they get. And I would just like to further that and thank every single employee of this school system, no matter what your job is, how many hours you work. Without everyone doing their job and sacrificing the way they do, school couldn't happen every day. And I just want to let you all know personally how much I appreciate all you've done all year long. And the last two years have... I don't know how you did it, but I appreciate it, and I'm thankful for you. And I want to give a special thank you to Dr. Horton and his staff for leading all those employees through this time. It wasn't easy. I can't call him a rookie superintendent, but he's pretty new. But we're lucky to have somebody like him in the position that he's in during these times because I guarantee you, we could have done a lot worse. He's done a great job. And once again, thank you for a great school year to all our employees. We appreciate it very much and hope you all have a great summer break.
All right. Are there any other board comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and potential litigation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.